We'll be making.
Good evening and welcome to the Milton Planning Board on October 9th, 2025. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introductions of the board and our new town planner, which we're pleased to welcome tonight. So if you'd like to introduce yourself?
Sean Fady, member.
Maggie Oldfield, member.
Jim Davis, member.
And on Zoom, we have Cheryl. Cheryl?
Cheryl Togias, member.
Great, and myself, Meredith Hall, serving as chair. And with us this evening to introduce you all to Elizabeth Manning, who's joining us as our new town planner, and we are glad to have you.
Thank you.
So, great, welcome.
Very excited to be here. It's been a good first week.
Good, that's great. Settling in quickly, from what I understand, so that's great. So now we can move to our administrative items. If there are just meeting minutes, currently, we don't have any meeting minutes to approve, so we can move to our future meeting dates, which our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Thursday, October 23rd, and then our next meeting after that will be Thursday, November 13th, our next regularly scheduled meetings.
Plus?
I'm sorry, town meeting, obviously, yeah. Yes, town meeting, October 27th, so that Monday night.
You say the 23rd and then the 13th of November?
Correct, the 23rd, then we'll have town meeting on the 27th, and then November 13th. Yes.
Is it just the one meeting in November right now with the holiday?
That we'll have to, we'll talk about if we feel like we do not need to meet that week, or if we feel like that there's something, since we will have just had town meeting, we may not need to meet that week unless there's something pressing, an application that comes forward, which that might need to be discussed, but, so yes, so we can talk about that.
Sorry, are we going to meet at 6:30 before town meeting?
Yes, we should schedule to meet before town meeting. I think we only have the traffic mitigation article, but in the event that there's any questions that arise, we'll, we usually get a room, and I think it's usually room 423 at the high school, but it's just to reserve a room that we meet first before going into the auditorium.
Okay.
So we just need to reserve that and post it as an open meeting.
Okay, yep, no problem.
For the 27th, yes, and maybe the 28th, too, just in case we run a second night, that just, we should probably have both nights reserved, and then we can always cancel, but if we don't need to. Okay, great. So those would be our next future meeting dates, and then any staff update that you might have?
Sure. So excited to be here. I know I was here two weeks ago, sort of sitting out there and observing, but tonight I'm excited to be here in my official role. It's been busy, this is, today was my sixth day, so we've interviewed a couple of candidates, good candidates for the assistant director position, so that's great. And that's moving along, and the folks in the selectman's office have been wonderful, the HR director and town administrator, so that's been terrific.
Great.
There was a letter came in today, which I didn't have a chance to circulate, but Nick shared it, there was an extension on the 90-day review period for Articles 3, 4, and 6 from the special town meeting in June.
Okay.
So that will be the MBTA Communities, I think the Peace Milton overlay?
Yes.
Those two, those two articles.
Okay.
So that review period has been extended to November 23rd, 2025.
Okay.
And that's literally landed on my inbox at probably 2:00 PM today.
Okay.
So I will share that with you folks if you haven't seen it.
Great. And I know the site plan approval was accepted, that is all set, and there was an extension on the ADU article that they had requested.
Okay.
That had been, so I don't know, I think that was a 15-day, I, it was a short extension, but I just, Nick may be hearing about that sometime soon as well.
Very good, okay, so the ADU is still, is still out?
Is still pending, yes.
Okay, still pending, okay, good. I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
All right, so that's that, I'll just be starting to circulate that. Nick had invited me to a meeting next week with the folks from MAPC on the, I wrote the financial?
Economic feasibility?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, great.
I wrote, I wrote EFA, and at the time, I knew what it meant, and it just went right out of my head.
That was one of the questions, yeah, oh, that's, that's great, that that's moving forward.
Yeah, so there's, so there's a meeting on that next week, I think they have a, I think they have some preliminary, like, analysis.
Yep, okay, yep.
And I don't know, I haven't really gotten into too much to the details of the scope of services on that contract, I think there's probably like five or six consultant contracts out there right now for different projects, so I'm not exactly sure, like, how far along that is.
Right, it's probably very early, yeah, yeah.
It seems, seems like it might be, but, but, so, so that, that meeting is next week, so I'll have some, I'll have some, you know, better, better hold on, you know, what that's, you know, what's going on with that. And then, like, an invitation for a community forum for November 13th with, from the Partnership for a Healthy Milton, and it's, I think it's over at the library, so I can, I'd be happy to share that information with the board as well.
Oh, you know?
That just came in today as well, looks good.
Yes, and, and I just got that same invitation, so I'm gonna try to go, too.
Okay, so that's it?
Great, all right, then, our, we can now move to our public comment, and if there's anyone on Zoom, you can raise your hand or join us here in person. If you'd like to come forward, yes, you can come on, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, and if you could just?
Use the microphone?
State your name and address for the record, if you could?
Sure, my name is Joshua Wilde, I live at 46 Milton Hill Road here in Milton. The reason I'm here tonight is because I was made aware that the local historic district was going to be in discussion by this board, so I thought it was important that I came down and voiced some of my concerns as a local property owner, I thought it'd be helpful in your guys' decision-making, and I thought it was relevant information, so I normally don't read from my notes, but I do want to be concise, I know this is somewhat finite, so I apologize, and it's not my preference, but, good evening, Chair, members of the planning board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, my name is Joshua Wilde, and I'm a longtime property owner and small business operator in Milton Village. I'm speaking not just for myself, but as part of a growing number of local stakeholders who are deeply concerned about the proposed designation of a local historic district in our neighborhood. Let me say at the outset that I care about this community's character, I take pride in maintaining my own buildings and contributing to the unique fabric of Milton Village, but I strongly oppose this proposal. Creating a new layer of regulation under a local historic district is not the right tool to preserve that history, and in my opinion, would ultimately do more harm than good, especially for the small businesses and property owners who are the lifeblood of this neighborhood. So what I like to do is, in a concise fashion, just kind of lay out some of my material concerns. Number one is I think it undermines the economic vitality and growth of the village. Milton Village is one of the few parts of town where small businesses can still afford to exist. The added costs, delays, and restrictions that come with a local historic district designation are simply not compatible with the economic realities of running a small business today. If this designation passes, basic repairs and improvements will become subject to design review and board approvals, property owners will face delays and added expenses even for routine maintenance, and investors will think twice before putting capital into Milton Village because they'll be inheriting a bureaucratic process with uncertain outcomes, and in my opinion, that's not preservation, that's the recipe for stagnation. Adding a local historic district may sound like a harmless preservation effort, but the reality is that a local historic district regulations impose long-term costs that disproportionately affect small property owners and independent businesses. For a neighborhood like Milton Village, which is not a tourist district, not a luxury enclave, but a modest working village, these burdens are simply not economically sustainable. Investors and small businesses like myself will not risk the capital in a district where every project becomes a negotiation with a commission, that is not theory, that is well documented as a deterrent, in my opinion, in the Commonwealth. Number two is that the local historic district disregards the wishes of the property owners. As far as I'm aware, there is little support from property owners in the proposed district. There was one public meeting where we got an invitation, at that meeting, there was only opposition there, there was no one there to show support. This is not about outsiders, we are the people who live here, work here, and pay taxes here, we maintain our properties because we care, a top-down designation imposed against the will of the stakeholders isn't democratic, it seems rather punitive. Number three, there is no demonstrated need for this designation. As far as I'm aware, Milton Village is not under threat, there is no wave of demolition sweeping the neighborhood, no big-box development looming, this feels more like a solution in search of a problem. The town already has a demolition delay bylaw, it has zoning regulations that guide use and scale, and has access to the Massachusetts Historical Commission's preservation tools. If preservation truly is the goal, I believe that there are less intrusive, more collaborative approaches, such as a voluntary, excuse me, a voluntary historic preservation program, facade improvement grants tied to design guidelines, and incentives, not mandates. Instead, this proposal seeks to mandate design control over property owners without public demand and without an economic rationale. Adding a local historic district on top of all that is a case of regulatory overreach, not necessity. Number four, I think the processes lack transparency and support. As I mentioned, this proposal has come with minimal outreach and no demonstrated community consensus, that's not how lasting policy should be made. What we need is real engagement, not a historic district imposed through a technical process that most residents barely understand until it's too late. The vast majority of impacted property owners were not consulted in any meaningful way prior to the drafting of the proposal, there has been no economic impact study, no cost-benefit analysis, no demonstration of widespread community support, in fact, I've yet to speak to a single property owner in the proposed district who supports the designation. That speaks volumes. And imposing this district against the clear will of the affected community sets a dangerous precedent, it violates the spirit, if not the letter, of the enabling statute, which encourages the establishment of local historic districts only where there is broad community support. Number five, this is a regulatory taking in disguise. When the government imposes restrictions that limit what a property owner can do with their property, especially without their consent, it raises serious legal and constitutional concerns. While it might not constitute a literal taking under the Fifth Amendment or Article 10, it functionally operates as a partial deprivation of property rights, it limits the use and marketability of the property, it lowers the value by increasing renovation costs and regulatory risks, and it creates uncertainty for buyers, tenants, and lenders. That is particularly problematic when the designation is made without the owner's consent. Number six, the long-term impact will be light, in my opinion, not beauty. In my experience as a real estate developer and a property owner, the irony of overregulation in historic districts is that it often produces the opposite of what it intends. Instead of incentivizing maintenance, it discourages reinvestment. Owners defer repairs because approvals take too long or cost too much, buildings deteriorate over time due to regulatory fatigue, businesses leave or never come at all, all afraid of red tape. This is how historic districts can stagnate, and how charming neighborhoods that are on the edge of economic revitalization can be placed into regulatory amber. In conclusion, my opinion is that the proposed local historic district in Milton Village is economically unsound for local businesses, raises legitimate legal concerns, is unwanted by the very people it would affect, and is unnecessary given the town's existing preservation tools. It also would override this board in a lot of ways, it's one of the things that I've been concerned about, is that even if someone in front of this board was able to successfully get this board's approval, the way it's written is you cannot get a building permit without a certificate of compliance from this board, so theoretically, this board could think a project is good for the town, and you'd have to move these two in parallel, obviously, and if that board decided that without, you know, these certain adjustments, this wasn't getting approved, something that this board thought was good, that yourselves, as elected by the town, would be in the same conversation as individuals that are elected by the select board, not elected by the people from the town, so those people would have the same power to stop a project, which for someone like myself, you know, I think it's concerning, I often think that I come down here and work well with this group, and it would be a deterrent for me if I felt like I had to work with two different groups who had two different ambitions, so preservation should be collaborative, not coercive, let's protect Milton's character through partnership, not prohibition. I urge you to not tie the hands of the neighborhood under the guise of preservation, let's invest in Milton's future without turning our back on the people who are building it every day. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
And I will offer myself, if there is further discussion, if you would like me to come back, I'm happy to engage in dialogue.
Certainly.
Be a part of it.
Yeah, this is an article that I think that's being discussed, it would be the Spring Town meeting, so there's a lot of time for more information.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew my concerns.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thanks. Okay, is there anyone on Zoom with, hands up?
No, I'm not seeing anyone.
For a public comment?
No.
Okay, okay, then, given that, we can move to our discussion, the October 2025 Special Town Meeting, item discussion, Article 3, the Report and Recommendation of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And I talked to Cheryl about this, and I'll let you, Cheryl, just speak on this, there was supposed to be a meeting post, that was supposed to be held last Monday, but never got posted, so they've not been able to vote on the report, but Cheryl, I'll let you sort of, you were going to sort of give an outline and talk a little bit about the article that is before town meeting, or coming before town meeting?
Right, thanks, Meredith. Hello, all, I'm sparing you the spreading of some germs, so that's why I am remote tonight, and hopefully, I'll make it through the discussion without too many coughs and sneezes. You know, we, as a committee, as a master plan implementation committee, there's six of us, and we've been working diligently to get to this final report that we're due to deliver to this board, to the select board, and to town meeting, and unfortunately, we've run into, we're running up against the town meeting, and we're just getting these, this update to you, so I do apologize to you, but I also would like you to know that the committee has been meeting as, more regularly than we had been, which is more than once a month, and we've been working diligently to get here. So I'd like to, if, I'd like to give you an overview of the draft report, which is about 30 pages, we won't go, I won't go into it in detail, but I do want to set up that background as the setting for how we arrived at the article itself. So Liz, I look forward to meeting you in person, do I have the ability to share screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Now let me find my screen.
Let me turn that for you guys?
One sec. You've got one now.
You guys got that?
Yeah, maybe turn it, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Jim.
Okay, can everyone see that?
That could?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so the, the report itself is divided into several contents, as you can see, and it's based on the organization of the, of the master plan itself, which has, and we've been focused, obviously, on the implementation section of the plan, which is volume one. And we also, so we were looking at the progress in each of the sections that are in that portion of the plan, and then we had something which we called changing conditions, which we felt that things have changed enough since the time that the plan was written, that they deserve some additional attention and an update to the plan. Just to give you a quick idea of what the committee is thinking, is that, that there should be targeted updates to the master plan, and not a complete rewrite of the plan. I think that plan, which was done over 10 years ago, at an expense of about $125,000, we didn't think that it was necessary to repeat all aspects of the plan, but, and we'll get into, I can get into a little bit wide on that. So this just sets out the introduction about the Mass General Law establishing the requirement for a master plan, and what sections need to be included, so that's setting the sort of framework, a little bit of the background of how the plan was arrived at, and then we highlight some things which are not required by statute but are often found in master plans, and you can see the six items that are listed here. Our master plan has some of these, but not all of these, and our recommendations are that we should consider adding some of these. So the way the plan's organized is there are three general themes, and you can see those here, from there, they're developed into seven goals and objectives, and then you can see those here, there's a few more that I'll scroll down to, and under each one of these goals, there are strategies, and when you take a look at all of these goals and all of the strategies, there's 120 strategies in total. And so what our committee did in the beginning was to say, well, how would we track progress on this, and it was really to set up a tracking mechanism for those 120 strategies. And so I'm going to now switch to the spreadsheet, which shows you how we track that, can you see the spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm on the, on the left side, the column A, you can see the goal, so there's the seven of those, and then the strategies within each one of the goals, and then what we did was, again, these are taken from the plan itself in terms of the priority, whether it was considered low-hanging fruit. This MPIC was, we, we divided these strategies into, up, so that each member of the committee would be the one charged with following up and seeing what the progress had been and the implementation. From the plan itself, there was a lead party established, and then there were partners, and then these columns, I, J, K, and L, are what we used to track whether we felt, what the progress had been, which is on the left, which we documented from, in the case of me, my own knowledge on the planning board, in the case of others, by reaching out to the lead party, and to, for updates, and then we invited various parties into our meetings to give us updates as well. So this will be an appendix to our report for the background and the details, so you can see through here, each one, this is how many of these we, sorry, we ended up getting, are tracking each one of them, and pretty detailed information. So now I'm going to switch back to the report. The committee took a lead on some furthering of the plan, whereas the plan had recommended that further study happen. You will recall that the committee bled some planning effort with the Metropolitan Planning Council in Milton Village, we were asked to do that by the select board at the time, that goes back nine years now. We also began the zoning work in Milton Village, and you'll recall that we turned over a recommendation on the zoning to the planning board, we turned over a report on the waterfront to the select board then. So what we have here are some updates on what's been happening with that since our involvement on both of those. Another effort that the committee was asked to participate in, in part by providing some matching funds, was the development of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, which the Metropolitan Planning Council prepared, and then that was sent forth to the select board. We also were involved in some town center planning when the fire station expansion project was in the design and construction document phase, then again, we worked with the MAPC on that planning work, out of that, there was the recommendation of the crosswalk that's in place on Canton Avenue was implemented, and there's some further planning work that could still happen relative to the recommendations that were in the master plan. We were asked by the library to assist them with the, their solutions to parking challenges. We were asked by the library to assist them with the, their solutions to parking challenges. This was also something that was recommended in the master plan. So all of these things that we participated in were all recommendations in the master plan. We, in addition to things where we took more initiative, we also had things at which we provided funding or we recommended funding at town meeting. And one was the development of a traffic model. I think some of you may have heard me talk about this before. I mean, a recent update on this is we've learned that it's, it was developed, but the town doesn't own it, and it's now out of date. This is a significant disappointment to the committee because it was something we felt would be a tool for the planning board, for the traffic commission, and others, and neighborhoods, in evaluating traffic impacts on proposed development. So our, one of our recommendations here is that the town should own this and should and reinvest in it. So the, we were also asked to be involved with some community visioning and what some call West Milton and a part of Milton, which has had less planning attention. So again, we helped facilitate that visioning work, which was provided by MAPC. And then most recently, the Partnership for Healthy Milton came to us and asked if any progress had been made on the recommendation in the master plan to explore intertown shuttle. None had been, no initiatives and no analysis had been done. And so the committee worked with representatives from the partnership to develop a scope of work for some, they do diligence or some fast gathering on what's happening in other communities, and, and they're working on that now. So the, then the master plan is the top 20 recommendations, and so we've gone through and highlighted things where there's, there's been success on those, and, you know, Milton Village and East Milton Square are two success stories in terms of creating visions for the commercial districts. There are other things where progress hasn't been made. For example, that some of the non-conforming aspects of our pre-existing non-conforming properties, that includes really number three, which is the small-scale commercial uses in the neighborhoods. So if you look at some of these, you'll see that they, they currently, I think they're current priorities, and they should, we felt, the committee felt, should have continued attention. So I won't go through each one of them, but this, this is the report that we're working to approve at a meeting next week, and then this would be just posted on the town website and distributed. So those top 20, you can see it's a work in process, so there's still things for the committee members to work on here. And then this goes into an update on each of the sections that are in the, in the plan itself. So the historic and cultural resources, it highlights a few things from the plan itself, the successes, the challenges, and the committee recommendations. And that holds true for the open space and recreation, the housing in neighborhoods. And you see names here, this is just the committee member who was taking the lead on this section. Economic development, circulation and transportation, and facilities and services. And then we get to the things that we felt required more attention than the master plan had paid to them, and this is the diversity, equity, inclusion, and climate change and sustainability. So we're highlighting what is being done currently with Climate Action Planning Committee and other Sustainable Milton and other initiatives. And then we decided we should have some reference to COVID and how that's changed the way we live. And then, and then a conclusion. So the conclusion, now I'm going to stop my share. The conclusion led to, has led us really to the recommendation of the article. And the way the article came about really was that Nick Milano had said to us, we need an article at least to allow for the, the committee to make a presentation, so that's to hear and act upon the report. So that's where we started. And then I asked Nick, because we had remaining funds that had been allocated in the last town meeting, how those could be utilized, and could those be utilized for planning purposes? And so in that discussion, and in discussion with the committee, we really felt as if we didn't want the work of following the implementation and to considering updates to, to fall off. We felt as if it was important, and we, we arrived at a recommendation to have a successor committee rather than an extension of the implementation committee. And that successor committee would do what the current implementation committee does with a little bit more, which is to, to make recommendations to the planning board, the select board in town meeting regarding potential updates to the master plan and also for key focus areas. And that key focus areas would be something similar to what I mentioned as changing conditions, like the climate change and sustainability. So, and the reason we felt it was important to include the other bodies is that there's so much in the master plan that doesn't fall under the purview of the planning board, if falls under the select board or the town administrator, either or other elected boards and committee, and appointed committees. And when we met with the two representatives from the warrant committee who reached out to us, they also felt that the warrant committee should be, provided annual updates as well. We discussed, currently, the, the size of the committee is seven, it's been six members for the last year or so. We felt it would be beneficial to add a couple of members, but not to get too large because it can make for challenging, challenges in doing scheduling. We felt as if the joint appointments was challenging, and we, we felt in talking with, again, with Nick Milano, that having the planning board have appointments, that the select board have appointments, and then another entity having appointments, and we said it on the, the town moderator, because these are generally the boards or the entities that appoint our committees. And then lastly, to transfer the funds, the remaining funds, to this new successor committee. So we also will be preparing a, a presentation for town meeting that, I'll kind of take what I highlighted now and, and put it into maybe a, a presentation that's projected.
So Cheryl, yeah, I had a question. Because at some point, we may need to make a determination if a new master plan is needed. And I, I agree with you, I, I think there's a lot of really good things that are in the 2015 master plan, but how is that going to be evaluated if this is, if it's a committee that's in perpetuity? How does that, how does that, the planning board, you know, should they decide, okay, you know, maybe we do need a new, at some point, a new, you know, go out and seek another, do another master plan at some point, if there's enough things that would be changed or, or need to be prioritized that weren't on there? How would that evaluation, I know it says in the, the report that you would still be reporting, you would report annually to the planning board, correct?
Correct, right. And any recommendations we would make would be to the board. So, you know, if it, if there was a recommendation that, you know, certain things were out of context, or, you know, things had changed enough that that should really be relooked at. I mean, they're going to have three members, or three appointees and one member of the planning board on the committee. So I think if the planning board itself felt as if a more robust update needed to happen, you know, you'll probably recall that when the plan itself was developed, there was a master plan committee, and I think it had, I was on it. Maybe it had 14 people or 15 or something like that. And that had one person who was a member of the planning board, who was Emily Innis at the time, and she was the chair of the committee. And then, you know, the committee provided updates back to the planning board and, and in fact, provided the master plan to the planning board to review for approval. So this is similar to the way that happened. It would still be, you know, a committee that has broad representation. I mean, we, we spoke quite a bit about how to make sure that there's equitable geographic distribution at a minimum and certain skill sets, what we put into the, the article, we spoke quite a bit about, because we felt as if we needed to address the fact that some neighborhoods felt as if there had been unequal level of attention to all neighborhoods. So I guess if you, if you think of it in the way that it's a continuation, and if a broader update were needed, maybe there would have to be a review of whether this is the, the same committee would, would be able to do that. I, I guess is thinking about how it was done before, Meredith.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, yeah, good.
Do you have a comment on that?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think one of the components that's really critical in, in the master plan process is that, is that public consultation. So is, is, like, is the, the implementation committee is focusing on priorities and, and targeted goals that were sort of, were, you know, came out of a comprehensive process that involved like public consultation. So that's just something, just something to think about. I mean, I don't know, does the, does the implementation committee kind of get involved at that level? Or are they sort of, they're working off of the recommendations that came out of that comprehensive, like, consultation process?
So what the committee has had are participated in a few public forums that we've organized. Milton Village was one, the library was another. I understand, you know, the, the community impact or community engagement aspect of what you're suggesting, Liz, and, and maybe you know, if you think about how this would be recommendations that are turned over to a planning board or to a select board, it would be those boards that would have the responsibility for that further engagement. That is kind of the way we were thinking, because our, we didn't think that the committee itself would be making the changes, we would be making the recommendations.
Yeah, no, that sounds, that, that, that's, that sounds very, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. And I think I was just sort of thinking out loud about the difference between engaging in another master planning process, you know, and sort of when that needs to happen versus this implementation effort, which is critical. And I also think it's real, I've worked on master plans where they did sit on the shelf. And so having the implementation component is critical. I love the fact that there's some money attached to it as well, because that's really important too, to have the, the resources to study these things as they, as they evolve and emerge, like, for instance, you know, the impact of, of the pandemic on the way, the way the town operates and, and all those things. So, yeah, I, I just, I just was sort of, I just was sort of positing that that might be kind of like the distinction is, is, you know, do you want to get into that comprehensive public consultation process again? And, and that's a, that's a discussion to have. If it's even needed, I don't even know if it's needed 10 years on, I, I don't know.
We felt as if there's a lot of, some recommendations that are in the master plan have not been fully implemented. So we really felt as if there's more work out of that plan that, that could happen. How long that carries on before, you know, a full new plan? I don't know. There's a lot of good work happening now on committees, whether it's the Climate Action Study Committee, and hopefully there'll be information coming out of the, the economic study that's ongoing. And there's a active social justice committee. So we've touched bases with all of these committees, they're not, they haven't issued their final report yet, but once they do, they, you know, how that, how they flow through sort of throughout town is, is something that we spoke about. So it's not just identifying, you know, a report stands alone here. There was a traffic mitigation committee that issued an excellent report, it's been five years now, I think very little has been implemented. So we wanted to highlight that there's been really good work, there's really good work underway, and implementation is really the key. We really have felt this, we don't need, in some cases, a lot more study, what we need is implementation. And part of that is making sure that everybody who's responsible for these strategies is aware of them and is in agreement with them. And so that outreach is something that we spent some time doing.
The other question, I just have one more question, then I'll, I'll ask others. I think the other, the other piece of this is, I'm not sure that the residents fully understand how much is in the pipeline for development projects right now, and what is the capacity of our building department, our staff, in attending various meetings, whether it's traffic, the traffic commission, the, you know, master plan implementation committee, there's so many committees in town, but how, I, I think it's important that people understand there is so much development in the pipeline that's coming because people keep saying, you know, we need more housing, we need more. I don't think until they, the reality hits and they see all of the construction sites in Milton that people will start to understand what that's going to do to the traffic or what's going to, you know. So I think every decision needs to be weighed, and, and you're right, some of these things are select board items, like the shuttle, which may be budget-driven, you know, it might be completely out of everyone's control if there aren't budget, you know, funds for it. But I think having a period of assessment, that's something that will also need to be discussed and, and evaluated in all of the work that everyone does, so.
So just as a follow-up on a specific comment that Liz made about public engagement, one of the concerns I have is that recommendations are being made without public engagement. So recommendations are coming from the master plan implementation committee when there hasn't been any public engagement at all, to Meredith's point as well. So for instance, on the whole library expansion, I did go to a public forum, and it was last June in the library, and it was very well-attended by a lot of different stakeholders, including people from Sustainable Milton. And the concern at that meeting was all the trees being removed for that, and even the neighborhood across the street on Reed's Dale and Academy Lane, they had no idea as to the discussion that was going on, and they had no idea that there was talking about putting in affordable housing and a cafe. So it's, I'm concerned about the lack of public engagement leading up to the recommendations. And then I don't, then I think it falls on the boards to do the vetting, and at that point, committee members may say, oh, we've already invested so much time and so much money and so much effort has gone into this. and so much money and so much effort has gone into this initiative, we can't just scrap it at this point. And then the pressure is on planning board members to like rubber stamp it, because an appointed committee has done all this work, when really they haven't. And if you just listen to what JD said, he said, and I quote, "appointed committees are problematic," end quote. So, and I've been saying for several, I don't know, that I feel that appointed committees are taking over the role of the elected committees, and that is a huge concern of mine.
I would say that, you know, the town has benefited quite a bit from expertise that can come from appointed committees. Elected bodies don't have, people don't have to meet any kind of expertise requirement. So, for example, climate action planning, you sit on Maggie, others, we all sit on committees, we all contribute, and we contribute our time, and residents also contribute their time and expertise. And I, and I think they get frustrated, and this is something we've heard at the, at the M-PIC, is that they get frustrated that their work ends up going into a report that sits on a shelf and doesn't get implemented. And, you know, it augments, these committees all augment the elected boards and our staff. You know, the town is, has been short-staffed, and having committees who can, who can do this work on a volunteer basis has benefited the town, in my opinion. And I'm not just talking about the M-PIC on that. And the, the committee, you know, has always decided that we, we can do a certain amount of work and that we must turn it over to others. And in the case of the library, it's being turned, is turned over to the library trustees, and, and they're seeking support from the select board. So the, in, in many cases, the lead party on these is the one that's going to have to do the most public outreach. So if the lead party is the planning board, then the planning board will need to do the public process. If it's the select board, they will need to do it. And I, I don't, I don't think it's wise to, to discount the work of, of volunteer committees.
Anyone else have any questions?
I'm just trying to think here. So I don't think it would be discounting the work of the committee, but I think once the M-PIC or master plan committee makes a recommendation, you know, they've already done all the work. So I kind of agree with Maggie, where I would like to see much more public input at the grassroots level at the beginning. So by the time it gets to us, we do have a lot of input from residents, not only, you know, experts on committees that have been appointed.
And I think that's why we chose, that we wanted to take ownership of the, of the overlay zoning in East Milton, for example, most recently, so we could be part of that and really hear the concerns of the East Milton residents and, and townwide, what, what their, and they had some real serious concerns, but I think they felt like they were really listened to by our board. So then when we went to town meeting, they, they trusted what they were hearing, because they knew that they were part of the process.
And we also had a consultant working with us, and it was a very malleable process.
And the consultant was wonderful, yes.
Consultant was great and constantly changing and meeting everyone's needs.
Right, right.
So do you think that this board has the capacity to track the implementation of the master plan right now? Because we don't, we have people who have been asked to serve on committees and have said that they don't have the time, any additional time than what they already put in. That's my concern. If we say that you're going to pull this back to the planning board to implement, and this is the committee's concern as well, is that you have members who have served on, on the master plan implementation committee, who were part of the master plan committee besides myself, who have expressed these concerns. And there's six of us who were in agreement on, on this approach.
No, I'm saying there should be more community input in the beginning.
And I don't, my understanding of the master plan implementation committee, committee is to just follow and track what's going on in town. So I'm not necessarily saying that we need to entirely do away with a committee that tracks it. If, if town staff feels that they don't have the capacity to do it, which I'm not sure if they have capacity or not, I'm not in a position to judge their staffing needs. But the master plan implementation committee, as I understand it, was really just to review projects that have come to the other boards, and they just track it, you know, to say, yep, we've done that, we've done that, you know, is, and then it's up to the boards to actually hold the public meetings and have the hearings and listen to the public. And then, once, you know, a board makes a decision on a project, then the, the committee who tracks it, you know, puts it in the spreadsheet and says, okay, we've done this, we've done this. Or they look at something that's outdated and it's not needed anymore, and they, you know, redline it, saying, this has come and gone and we don't need it. So that's my understanding of it, was really just a committee to track what was going on.
So the charge of the committee that established in 10 or 11 years ago is to monitor the implementation plan with the town's current master plan, to recommend to the planning board and the select board the actions necessary to implement such plan, including timing resources and responsibilities. So, you know, the, so that's number one in the, in the article, which is the same continuation. So the items two and three, you know, in terms of the recommendations, you know, the, it is those who have been checking in on all of the 120 strategies who are in the position to be the most informed about all of them, and that's the reason for the, making the recommendations portion of it. And the two and three are really the same in terms of regarding updates, but also key focus areas. Some, there've been three different, I think there are four different members, four different members who represented the select board over the years. And, you know, they, they have had an interest in certain focus areas of the plan. And so, you know, to make these recommendations, you know, to have the committee, which has been monitoring all this, make those recommendations back to that select board or that plan, that planning board was not important.
I, I, can I speak for a minute? Cheryl, I hope you feel better, and I'm glad you're not here to, to infect us, so thank you for that. But I do hope you feel better. I think I'm, I, I got a, I have a number of things on my mind, but I first want to address what, what was in the article in 2014, which I want to specifically read what was written in here. And I won't read the entirety of it, but I will read what I believe was the responsibility. And this is from the section of the article, as we all know, in the recommended section, right? So this is the warrant committee's recommendation. Recommended that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen and the planning board to appoint a master plan implementation committee for the purpose of reviewing the implementation plan within the town's master plan, established under Master and Rural Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81D, at least twice annually, and to recommend to the planning board and the board of selectmen the actions necessary to implement such plan, including timing, resources, and responsibilities. Said committee is expected to report to the planning board and the board of selectmen at least twice annually. Said committee will report to the town meeting at least annually. At the town meeting regularly scheduled in October, or if no such meeting is held, the next annual town meeting, the report will contain the following information. A, implementation steps accomplished within the past year. B, anticipated steps to be accomplished within the next two years. C, resources, including town meeting appropriations or other actions necessary to complete those steps. So this article says that the master plan implementation committee would report twice annually to both the planning board and the select board. And then separately, they would have an annual report that would be provided to town meeting, and it would have those components that I read, A, B, and C. Now, I'm losing track of my town meeting membership. I'm around 15 years, and I've been in this position, I'm now in my fourth year. I am trying to recollect, over the time that I've been both a town meeting member and a member of the planning board, how many times we've received reporting from the master plan implementation committee. Now, since I don't know that offhand, I am going to make a request of you, that you make a request of the master plan implementation committee. I'd like to see the reports, all of the reports from the inception. You know, if the committee was formed, I want to understand, did they meet the duties and requirements that the article said they would? So I would like to see, were all of the boards in town receiving reports from the master plan implementation committee? So that's, that's a formal request, I don't know where you're going to go for it, but...
Cheryl, do you want to speak to that?
Well, I'm not finished yet, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. So for the next time we meet, I'd like to have those, because I want to see the reporting. I'm not, some people are proponents of committees, other people aren't proponents of committees. And I respect Cheryl's point of view, and I do think that there are necessary committees with significant purpose, right? Where we passed by the fire station that's being built down by St. Agatha's Church, and that's probably a very good example of a necessary committee. You know, we had a specific task, we had to construct or renovate three fire stations in town. All of our elected officials have probably more work on their hands, and they needed that kind of support. I think that was a great committee to create, and the committee had a specific task. And my opinion is, once the task is complete, the committee should no longer exist, right? And, and we should be grateful for the service and the time, the effort that the committee provided. But, you know, I also feel like we have a town government that has a full complement of paid positions, including now Liz Manning as a director of planning and community development. We also have a significant number of elected, of elected boards and officials. And, you know, it's my opinion that good governance practice, you know, is to allow not only the hired positions, but the elected positions, you know, to do their job, to do what they're expected to do. And, you know, they're the ones that should be conducting the town's business, you know, and yes, maybe the planning board should, should have much more involvement in the master plan, maybe we should. But creating committees, in my opinion, it often diminishes the responsibility of the hired individuals and the elected individuals, you know. And a good example of it is Cheryl said recently, I can't remember which committee Cheryl just mentioned, but little has been done to implement what a committee had, had created, you know, and it's not, it's not a mystery of why, it's because there's so many committees that have been created in the town, it does become confusing as to whose responsibility is what, right? So, you know, I, I do consider, like, excessive creation of committees to be disruptive and, you know, in a lot of ways, you know, inappropriate for good governance. And I, I don't, offhand, Nick Milano probably knows how many committees we have, but, you know, I have lost track of the number of committees that exist in the town of Milton. It seems to me that every time there's a, there's a, there's an idea out there, there's a, there's the formation of another committee. And, you know, look, volunteerism is important, we're all volunteers. As far as I know, the only person sitting at the table that is getting paid is Liz. And, and, you know, I do believe that the town needs, you know, volunteerism, but I think it kind of creates confusion with regard to who's responsible for what, you know. Now, here's, here's Liz now, and, you know, probably still trying to understand how does the town of Milton operate, you know, and, and, you know, I, I'm stunned. I'm a planning board member. The first time I'm hearing about this thing is the same day that the warrant was in my mailbox. And, and, you know, you've got to be kidding me. How is it that the first time I'm hearing about it as a planning board member is the day that the warrant shows up in my mailbox? How many weeks or months has this been a topic of conversation? And by who? Certainly by Cheryl. You know, and this is the first time? Cheryl, Cheryl, Cheryl.
No, I'm warranted, and I don't appreciate it.
It's not, Cheryl, it's not, it's not, it's, thanks for interrupting me. But, you know, it's not fair to the planning board, you know, that this is the first time that we're talking about this in a planning board meeting.
I agree.
So I don't get it. You know, there's an awful lot to digest here. And, you know, I, I have a lot of questions. I don't know if there's a good reason to, to continue a committee. This isn't even continuing the master plan implementation committee, this is creating another committee. This is not really about implementation, this is about creating another planning entity that's going to make suggestions, right? You know, they, they don't have implementation. I, I have to read this, I mean, I, I want to read a little bit more about the charge, there's three charges here. So I, I'm not even sure that I'm 100% prepared to say how I feel about what the committee's duties are, but this isn't really implementation, this is planning. This is planning, that's what this is. You know, we are the planning board. Liz Manning is the director of planning and community development. And now what we're talking about is adding nine more people to the planning group. Not the implementation of a plan, but the planning group. That's how I read it. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I just, it's just, I'm disappointed, and, yeah, I'm really disappointed that this is what we're talking about here tonight. And, and like I said, got the warrant in the mail today. It's in my mailbox, mailbox, it's probably in, in yours as well.
I did care.
So in closing, I do want to see, you know, the reports that have been prepared by the master plan implementation committee from its inception in 2014. And by the way this has been written, this should be a report to the select board and the planning board twice annually, and this should be an annual report to town meeting. So by simple math, if the committee has existed for 10 years or 11 years now, there should be 33 reports someplace. So I want to see how well this committee that was formed performed their duty of reporting.
So the charges required reports and verbal reports have been provided, there also have been written reports submitted for the annual report each year, so you could find those in your annual report. You know, personal attacks about how this article came to be, and you're being insulted, really don't have a place in deciding in the discourse of whether something is a good idea or not. The fact that this article came to be towards the closing of the warrant had to do with a committee that's been working diligently on its recommendations, which we were charged to do. And at the end of our 10 years, to make recommendations, and that's what we've done. We've made our recommendation. You may not like our recommendation, but we've done what we've been charged to do. And to provide insult as to whether the committee's been living up to what its charges, I find really disappointing.
Well, Cheryl, do not ever accuse me of making a personal attack on you. If I make a personal attack on you, I will tell you before I do so. I'm expressing my point of view, and the fact of the matter is, as a planning board member, for the first time for us to discuss this as a planning board, on the day that the warrant is in our mailbox, that, I don't consider that a personal attack, I consider that a statement of fact.
I think it would have been helpful to, because I, I don't necessarily disagree with what the art, what's being proposed in the article. I, I think it was more process-related, that I also, and I, and I talked to Cheryl today, and she really sort of explained how this unfolded. But that it wasn't, that the planning board wasn't made aware of this as our representative, it would have, I think, if this... It would have, I think, if this goes forward, I think it's just important to have the communication lines open, and part of that is getting updates from the committee semi-annually, that we just schedule, you know, on a regular basis. And now we, you know, Liz has been here, and that was, I think, part of the lack of communication also, was during this interim period that we didn't have an assistant town planner and didn't have our town planner in place. So I think that was where, and I give Nick so much credit for all he has been doing, because he's been sort of keeping everything moving forward and assisting the Planning Board. So it was just a series of things that I think just ended up, it wasn't communicated with us. I think Nick thought that we knew that this was happening, and this was a discussion by the Master Plan Implementation. It just would have, I think the right process would have been a discussion with the Planning Board as the master plan falls under, the responsibility falls under the Planning Board and the Select Board. So, but I understand. I don't know that there's opportunity for further discussion on this. It's scheduled to go to Town Meeting, October 27th, so...
So that's, yeah, so that's kind of my, where I have been, all this. And it was interesting, because I'm on one of the new committees that was just formed, the Budget Overview Committee, and we've had two meetings, and one was last Friday. And it was interesting, because we were just discussing a calendar of dates as to when the Budget Overview Committee would receive information about budgets, one from the town side, one from the school side. We spent a lot of time just talking about a calendar as to when those budgets would be presented. And a school committee member said, "I cannot give a date on a calendar until I go back and check with the school committee." I can't even give a date. And it, you know, questions arose like, well, like, you should be able to give a date, because we don't want to stop the process moving. But when I was looking at this, and, you know, I did print out, you know, what Sean did from the 2013, I did what go in, and I print out the Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81D, about the master plan and the creation of the master plan. And I have been following, you know, MPEC pretty regularly, but not every meeting or every month. And I too was a little bit surprised about this, and especially when it was submitted, this article was submitted by the Master Plan Implementation Committee, because that committee was created by the Planning Board. And so I would think that the committee would go to the boards that created the committee and say, "What are your thoughts on this?" You know, and in my personal opinion, is how can we, as a Planning Board, support something that cuts the Planning Board out of the process? You know, I think the Planning Board's role is to ensure that projects are consistent with the master plan. That's our Planning Board role. It's not the Master Plan Implementation Committee's role. They're just, their role is just to follow projects. And so I don't know how we can support this. And I was wondering if, like, we could make a motion to withdraw this article from the warrant.
So can I just, a couple times? The committee was formed by a vote of Town Meeting. And you'll remember, a year ago, there was an extension granted also by a vote of Town Meeting. And if I go back and share again the implementation spreadsheet, and you can look at who the responsible parties are, there's far more than the Planning Board as the responsible party. So if we look at who the lead party is, we'll start at the top here, we have, Planning Board is showing up here twice, but there's many others that are showing up here as well. Some of them are appointed committees, like the Conservation Committee. Some of them are elected, and some are departments. You'll see that there's here, under this one, again, many other departments and boards responsible, other than the Planning Board as the lead party. And that, you will find that all the way through. If you go to, like, the tab that says my name, this is the thing where the Planning Board was listed as the primary. You can see that it's not the entire report. It's, if I go back to the master list again, and I keep scrolling, there's a lot of the other lead parties here. When it comes to certain things really around zoning, the Planning Board's the lead. But when it comes to other things, there's many other people involved in the implementation of this plan. So it doesn't purely lie with the Planning Board. And that's the reason that the reporting was also to the Select Board and to the Town Meeting. And so that, this committee has recommended that the work is not done. And if you come over here, you'll see where there aren't too many that are highlighted as green, where all of the work has been done, that the strategy has been met. There are some where none has been, no work has been, the yellow one, false all the way across. So there is still implementation of this plan that needs to be done.
Will you forward that to us, Cheryl? Can you forward that spreadsheet to us, and then the other 33-page document that you showed earlier?
Yeah, the, I'm going to stop the share for this now, for a moment. The other document is still in draft form, which we will be voting on, just bear that in mind.
That's fine. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And my question isn't about the, who's responsible. That's not in your spreadsheet. That's not my concern. It's the Article 13, which established the Master Plan Implementation Committee. That was submitted by the Planning Board and the Selectmen. So I understand that different boards are going to have input in, and that's what you're tracking, and I totally understand what you're doing. And that was my point earlier on, was the committee is supposed to track, so it makes sense that you're tracking the different committees. But I'm looking at it from a higher view, in that this committee was formed by an article that was submitted by the Planning Board and the Selectmen. And the master plan, under Mass General Law, it says that such plans shall be made and may be added to or changed from time to time by a majority vote of such Planning Board. So it is the Planning Board's responsibility of the master plan, and that's why I go back to the Master Plan Implementation Committee is really only there to track what the town has been doing. It hasn't, that responsibility is the Planning Board's responsibility.
It's just unfortunate. Go ahead, Cheryl.
I just want to mention, MAPC, you know, Metropolitan Planning Council, does master plans, they're a regional planning agency. They asked Tabor, Keely, and I to participate in a session that they were doing on master plan implementation, and they continue to use our committee as an example of an effective implementation plan committee. And so I do think, when you think about what it would take for the Planning Board to continue to monitor the implementation, we're talking about six people who, on this committee and others over time, who have, you know, spent a significant amount of time. I'm not sure that it's realistic for the Planning Board to be able to invest that amount of time itself.
Yeah, and I didn't say that it's the Planning Board's responsibility to track. I didn't say that. I'm saying it's the Planning Board's responsibility to engage with the public, make recommendations, look at the planning, look at the master plan, and the Planning Board is responsible for all land use issues. The Master Plan Implementation Committee is not. Their responsibility is to track. And one just interesting note about MAPC, which I had no idea about, but just as a town, the town of Milton pays by not getting reimbursement from the state, $17,000 a year. That's what our contribution for next year, FY '26 is. $17,000 comes off our funding from the state, and we get nothing from MAPC. If we hired, if we wanted MAPC to look at something for us, we then have to pay them.
Maggie, that's true.
It's totally, I know. I'm just saying, I just found, I just found this out. And basically, MAPC, it's just an assessment on the cherry sheet, so it's not a bill or contract we pay. The state charges us, just like they do for the MBTA, and it's deducted from local aid. So it's just, I didn't know enough about MAPC, and I just found that out, and I just wanted to let people know.
But I wanted you also to know that we do get things in return. We got a $30,000 grant for the Milton Village work. We got a grant for the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. I believe we got a grant for some of the early East Milton Square work. So we do get something in return for what we contribute.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, I don't think, you know, we are where we are right now with this. This is on the warrant. It's been published. It's out there. It would have been nice to have a conversation before tonight on this, but...
Well, we'll Town Meeting asked the Planning Board, because the Planning Board is responsible for this, will the Planning Board be asked if we support this article or not? And should we take a vote?
I mean, the challenge is, I don't want to see any progress, you know? I don't want to stop any progress. I want to keep things, you know, I think it's great, I agree with Liz, that you don't want a master plan that sits on the shelf. But are the suggestion, you know, the Planning Board will have our priorities. You know, we've talked about doing some, maybe some zoning on the west side of town, some other opportunities that may be things that we will look at. Will our priorities align with the recommendations of this new committee? That's what I'm, you know, I don't want there to be any conflict on the agreement on what is to be prioritized. It's obviously coming from the master plan. It needs to come from that. But how we achieve that and move forward with progress. I don't know, Cheryl, what your thoughts, or even if you would want to talk to the committee about if we sent it back for further study and had that, just a little, a more in-depth conversation on how this will actually, how this will be implemented, you know, and how this will work going forward, and determining whether, at some point, if we need a new master plan, how that process might work. But I understand, if, you know, your committee has worked really hard, and I just, I want to credit all of you and your members for all that work. I'm just nervous how this is actually going to play out.
Yeah, to your point.
And I think reporting is really important, and that open line of communication is very important.
What happens if there is a difference of priorities? Who takes priority?
Well, the master plan was adopted by the Planning Board and the Select Board in 2015, I believe. And if you read the, I think the statute says that your zoning and your bylaws and your other efforts are to be made consistent with the master plan. So, you know, when thinking about priorities that the Planning Board might have, the Planning Board should refer to the master plan. But, you know, if the Planning Board feels as if things are different enough from what that master plan recommended, you know, the Planning Board could put forth what the Planning Board wants to put forth. The thing about the plan itself is, there's a lot of, you know, cross, I guess, the disciplinary kinds of things to really think about. When you really look at it, and you think about things in isolation, if you think about, well, you know, some, the way traffic mitigation's been handled, well, you put up a "do not enter" sign on this street, and that'll take care of that particular concern for a particular neighborhood. But, you know, is it something else that's broader, that's bigger picture? And there are interrelationships between, for example, traffic issues, development projects, you know, these zoning districts, parking requirements, et cetera. So, you know, what I've, my experience has been, when I hear people come to the Planning Board and they say that they're referring to the master plan, they're referring to maybe a comment or two, but not the overall sort of strategies and some comprehensiveness of it. And so I think if the Board wants to begin to look at the plan as it looks at initiatives, you know, I think that would be beneficial. You know, is, have we moved on things that are recommended? Like, it was recommended to do an overlay district possibly, or explore an overlay district, like a medical overlay district near Milton Hospital. It was suggested to explore an overlay district around town center. You know, there are things in there that the Planning Board has not acted on at all. There are others about nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming businesses in residential districts. The Planning Board has not acted on those. So we have things right now that we can take out of that master plan and act on them. I think it would be beneficial to go through the plan as a board and see what's there, because it's a big document, but there are definitely, if you look, if one is sent, I mean, our spreadsheets are just tracking. All of those things are already in the plan. You can look at the plan and read that section, and you'll see where the Planning Board is tagged to do these things. The report itself is one that provides commentary on what's been done, but the list of strategies and why those were recommended are in the plan itself.
And I do think that we should, as a Planning Board, should look and review the master plan. And to your point about people working in silos, that was a discussion at our Budget Overview Committee, that, you know, we shouldn't be working in silos. But to me, then, it was really frustrating. The Planning Board is all about land use, and just the other night at the Selectmen's meeting, they talked about selling a town asset. And on page 10 of the Master Plan, Volume 1, it specifically says, "To maintain municipal buildings by continuing to invest in preventative maintenance of all facilities, and by taking next steps to renovate or build new fire stations, Department of Public Works facilities, by setting aside funds to continue to maintain the recently renovated school buildings." So here we are, in one hand, I'm hearing, you know, certain board members saying, "Oh, we can't work in silos." But in reality, the silos are existing, and I'm just frustrated by that. And then, you know, not to get off topic too much, but we're talking about all of this, I may as well just bring it up, is the whole library plan. You know, I touched upon it, and like Cheryl, you identified yourself, I watched the Selectmen's meeting, and you said you were Chair of the MPEC. And so to me, when I, if I was an average resident watching that, I'd be like, "Oh, MPEC is talking about this whole new library plan, taking down trees, putting up affordable housing, and a cafe, all in like, the craziest traffic section of Reed's Jail Road on Route 28." And the Planning Board hasn't been part of that discussion at all.
Maggie, you mentioned the library, and that a couple of times, that the recommendation is take the analysis further, to take it away from the, well, this committee's sunsetting, right? And the library trustees, that's not their expertise, so it's not, you know, it may be that this is not a good idea, but it's to explore it further with technical expertise and with a lot of community engagement. So they, there is a proposal from a consultant who would spend a good chunk of that time doing community engagement, to see if there would be support and see what the trade-offs would be. So I just want to make that clear. It's not any... It's not anything which was said, this is what it should be, and it's done and over. Okay?
Okay. I, I heard a different message than that, but...
So, I think, right, I think we should sit with this. I don't think we need to take a vote tonight on anything. I think that it's, it's disappointing that, as our, as our representative, that we didn't know about this, seeing that we had been very instrumental in creating the, the committee. But it is where we, we are where we are, so...
I did mention to you, I think, that I wanted to come in and provide an update, and I thought we had a report ready sooner.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to be clear that I haven't been silent about it, it's just, and I expressed to you today that the report is just taking longer and getting agreement. You know, we have to have, you know, certain things documented in order to take that agreement.
Certainly.
So I just, I want to make that clear. And the other thing I just really would like to request, and I've said this before when it's come up about MPIC reporting, I really, you know, think that it would be beneficial to put reports of the committees on the agenda on a regular basis, because other members sit on committees, I have not heard one report on the capital improvement committee. I don't think we've had a report on the climate action planning committee, or the open space committee. And so I don't think it's right to call out this committee particularly, as having not had an update, when I think all the committees should be providing updates, the ones that we serve on.
The only problem is MPIC is required, right? Twice a year. I have no problem reporting on capital, but it's in the...
I have no problem reporting. I don't have the agenda.
So maybe that would be just going forward, or just a good thing for us to do, just to have a semi-annual meeting that we set aside for updates.
I think something different would be even more valuable. At the start of our meeting, we have, we have an administrative component. We have members that are on committees. We should simply have an administrative component at that section of the meeting and say, is there anything that our committee members, you know, as a committee member, you're a conduit back and forth. You're a conduit between the planning board and whatever committee you sit on. That, that person, if you choose to be on a committee, you simply can be asked at the beginning of every meeting, is there anything that's going on on your committee that you would want the members of the planning board to know? Right? I mean, now, my, my, my expectation is of any committee member, if there is something going on on a committee that you're on, and I'm just saying this as a member of the planning board, I don't care if it's a committee you're on, committee you're on, committee Jim's on, or committee Cheryl's on, if there's a discussion going on within your committee that has anything to do with the planning board, you should tell us. You should tell us. I don't care if it's finished, unfinished, 10%, 100%, you know what I mean? Just communicate. Just communicate. We need some level of transparency. Why do I react the way I react? Because it feels to me like there wasn't transparency. So, that upsets me. I spend hundreds of hours in here, like you guys do. You know, I expect transparency. So I think it could be really simple. It's not even an annual report. It's a standard requirement, that if you're a committee member, and there's a discussion going on on your committee, that the planning board should have some knowledge of, whatever it might be, you're there for that reason.
Does that sound good?
Agreed.
Sound good, everybody?
Yeah.
Good. Well, I think that, I think that would be helpful. So I think, unless, Cheryl, if there's anything else that you would want to add to this, I think we can move to our next agenda item.
That'll be good.
Is that good? And Mr. Loffler has been sitting here, so would you all mind if we moved up? Because I think it's, he'll be fairly quick. Move up the item on the local historic district discussion? And, and I think this is a quick, this will be an overview of where we are, a status update, so Larry, if you'd like to join us?
Thank you, Cheryl. I am Lou Loffler, the chairman of the local historic district study committee. I live at 96 Cliff Road here in Milton. This is a committee that was created by the select board a number of years ago to study if we should develop a local historic district. We did do that exhaustive study. We came up with a plan. We presented that plan to town meeting, and they pushed back, not because of what we had chosen or any of the subsequent report, but because of the bylaw. The bylaw becomes a law. And as a chairman, I was naive, and not, and also not a lawyer, not understanding that there has to be a connection between local and state. And so we had some, some issues with that. So we're back. We'd like to go in the spring and come back up again. We have the bylaw. I have, we would like the planning board, just like we were talking about, we're here to communicate what we're doing. We have provided the chairman with an ability to write in any kind of changes that the planning board would like to see in this. And we're going to do that with the planning board, Cheryl's committee, we were just there, the historical commission, select board, of course, and any of the other stakeholders in this. So over the next several months, we want to move through this. So in the spring, we have the planning board and all these other boards, including town members, town meeting members, understand what we're doing here. This is good for Milton. It doesn't cost us anything. It protects us. We were very, very careful as a committee to make sure that we're not, like some of the other towns in Massachusetts and around the country, they define so narrowly what, what you can and cannot do, and we didn't want to do that. We're, you know, more than 200 years old. We're going to be another 100, 200 years old. We want the town to be able to grow, but we want to protect the things that make the town very unique. And that's, we, we defined that pretty well. But in putting it into the text, we have to have that right. So I'm here to say preliminarily, we're doing this. Cheryl, Cheryl has a copy, Meredith has a copy of this. And I'm not sure how we move forward with that, getting that ultimately, but that's what I'm here.
Yeah. And that was the Google document?
Correct.
That you would send me. I have not opened it yet. I have to say, I'm sure I can. Did Liz, did you get that?
I actually did, I wasn't able to open that Google doc, so will you be able to send that? Okay?
Okay.
I'll just scan this.
Scan it, and we can email it out to everyone, so...
And, and so you'll see in that doc, there are some blue things there. And what we did was we, everything that we got from town meeting, we went back and we further defined, and we put the changes in where we thought the changes should be. But now we want to go to all of the other committees and say, do you agree these are the right changes, they're not the right changes? We then present it to the state, back to the state. I've had conversations with them. We shouldn't have any problems with them. The people we report to at the state have changed, but that's what happens in local government, you know, and state government.
And does Nick Milano have a copy of this also, to start reviewing with? We now have legal counsel.
And the new legal counsel.
The new legal counsel, yeah. Yeah, okay. Great. Because we would want for him to...
So the other thing that we did not do, we were just talking about public discourse. We only had to have one meeting. We had three public meetings. And we're going to do that again. We think it is, it's good for Milton, and we should allow everyone to talk, but the area we've decided is Milton Village, Lower Mills, that area. The only area in Milton that hasn't been protected in is the first area that created Milton, so, or where Milton was first created. So, thank you for your time. Interesting listening to all of this back and forth. We are all volunteers, you know, and it's, we're just trying to do things that help our, our community.
Can I ask a question? I don't think you were here when we had a resident come in and speak during citizen speak, so perhaps you should review the recording. And he spoke specifically on the historic district and his concerns, so it might be helpful if...
Do you know who that was?
It was J.D. Wild.
J.D. Wild, he's one of the major players.
Yeah. So he had a list of, of concerns, so maybe you should connect with him and get his list of concerns, and then see if you...
We've reached out to J.D. He has been to several of our meetings. That's why we had extra public meetings. I, that's the commercial side, commercial side, residential side. The commercial side, there's only three or so big players in that area. J.D. is one of them. And we would like to have one of those several families in this committee, sitting with it. The big concern with that is it's another layer of regulation. He's a developer. It's another layer of regulation. What are they going to do? How am I going to get stopped again? And that's what we, that is another thing that we need to define, where we want our committee to go away. Once we go away, there's a new committee that comes, and then they, they just review things. Right now, we don't know what the review is. So you're, you're going to come in and do something. J.D. wants to do something, something new. The Bank of America building. I know that's already in the works, so we're far down the road, but, but for that, there's an historical reason why that building needs to be protected, but he's not doing anything, or they're not doing anything, that's really going to change that. So there's no regulation on that. Does he first go to the building department? Does he go to the historical commission? And where does the historic district committee come in? In our estimation, we should be the last of the line, you know? We should be, if it goes to the historical commission and the planning board and the building department, we shouldn't have any problem with it at all, because every one of those other boards cares about the town in the same way. But J.D. is, is, you know, he's important. I've spoken to him. I've asked him to be on the committee.
Good. Great. Any other questions?
Good.
And I'll be back in the next couple of months, or hopefully one of my committee members.
Great. And we'll circulate this for everyone's review.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We worked, yeah. Okay. So the last item, and I just, we'd put this on because this is, in case, in the event that there was any discussion on the traffic mitigation article. Cheryl, you weren't here at the last meeting, but there weren't, nobody, we've not had any questions from the public or from the warrant committee on this. I know there's some assigned warrant committee members. It seems to be a pretty straightforward article. There was one requested change by town council, which we voted on, which was just to limit the definitions. Yeah?
Yes, I may. Those two members of the warrant committee reached out to me about the article, and I did a Zoom meeting with them to give them an overview of it. And I, I think, you know, there might be some, have been some confusion that we're creating a new article rather than just amending it. So I think when we do the introduction at town meeting, it would be important to note that, that it's not an entirely new article, that it's just some minor amendments.
And I had told them that the warrant committee, when I went to the warrant committee, just when we thought we were going to have our signed bylaw in the traffic mitigation, but they might, they might have missed that. So I agree, that's, that's really important. I didn't think there was enough that we needed to make a presentation at town meeting. You know, we've done that with some of our more complicated updates, you know, but, but this isn't an already existing article.
And just as a note, in the comment that the warrant committee made, their very first sentence says, "This article seeks to amend the zoning bylaw." So they are used, they highlighted that it is amend, but I don't know if people will catch that.
Were there, were there any other questions that they had, Cheryl, that I'm sure you were able to answer? Pretty much most.
You know, I think it's confusing if you're just reading the article out of the blue, you know, without background. I gave them background about the traffic studies, about larger projects and smaller projects, so I've kind of explained the original article to them, and then how we were just really trying to take care of some things that had been flagged a while ago, and just hadn't been brought back. And, and then I think it became fairly simple for them.
Good, good. Okay. All right. So that was really all I wanted to ask, and if, Liz, if you had any questions on that article, on the traffic mitigation? But it is an existing article that we're just updating a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. You know what? I did have an opportunity, I know you would ask me to try to reach out to the traffic commission on this, and I did have an opportunity to speak really quickly with Marina Fernandez about the article. I, you know, I was hoping that, you know, it could get in front of the traffic, traffic commission, but I'm not sure that that's, whether the timing is going to come out of that. But she, she did respond and said that she was, you know, she was in favor of the language and, and, you know, thought it was, it was past muster, so I checked that box.
Great. Oh, that's good. Okay. All right. Anything else anybody had on, on that article? So that is the end of our agenda items for this evening. So thank you, everyone, and well, so glad to have you here, Liz, and, and we'll be meeting in, in two weeks. And then, if there's anything else, Cheryl, that you want, you know, to reach out on, you know, when did you say you're, you're meeting again with MPIC?
On the 15th.
On the 15th, okay.
It'll be hybrid, Baker, Baker Conference Room, also.
Okay. All right, good. Well, I hope you feel better, and, yeah, don't get, hopefully, sick.
Hopefully, thank you.
Okay. Good. And we'll hear about your trip too sometime, so, which is sounds wonderful. So if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay. We'll do roll call. Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good evening. Good night.
Good night.